Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberate lights so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Bill? Roll call Ms. P., please.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Marconi?
Here.
Mrs. McBride?
Present.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Belishko?
Here.
Also in attendance is Mayor George Brown, Administrator Charles McCormick, City Attorney Tim Henry, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, Administrative Assistant Lisa San Filippo. Good evening, welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. Chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of the council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into the microphone.
Would anyone like to speak about pending legislation?
Angel Mathis Wilkes-Barre. My first question would be with the the farmer specialty vehicles. And I'm sorry, I didn't look to see what the work session was because I had some medical issues I was dealing with. Exactly what is it? And how would this, how would this mobile clinic actually benefit the community? And is it 100% funded through the epidemiology and laboratory re- and capacity grant from the Department of Health? And with the, with the next agenda item, does that software for community engagement, is that to be used inside of the vehicle? Or is it to be used within the Department of Health?
You're done?
I'm done.
Mayor, anything?
Hi, Angel.
Hi.
Yeah, the first thing is the van or the bus that we're talking about. It'll be used for any time that we need a mobile unit for the health department. It's 100% funded by a grant. If you do not take advantage of this grant, that money's going to go to another city. So because of all the great work that the health department does, not just during the COVID situation, but during all the other situations that they deal with, okay? We felt this was a wonderful project to jump in on. And also the GIS software, I think you're talking about, it's not just for the health department, it'd be expanded to other departments also.
Okay.
That's also funded.
Through the same grant?
By it.
Thank you.
Anyone else on pending legislation? Sam?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Bob Kalabowski, I'll just be short and to the point. I think it's good that we're doing this fireworks thing, but it's basically going to be a waste of time, even though it'll be on the books. Because it's impossible to enforce. We have laws against murder, attempted murder, aggravated assault, assault. We have laws and ordinances against everything, and this is one that you just can't really enforce, especially on the Fourth of July. I mean, you'd need the army to come in here and try to catch everybody. You just, and that's one thing people do to have fun, though. I know it's very dangerous and I respect that you're going to try to do something, but it's a waste of time. But you should also add on there for like people that are, because it's really a noise thing. When people are caught like doing drive-by shootings and stuff and shooting cars and houses up and everything, I think we should make an ordinance for that too. These, you know, in other words, once they're caught and stuff, get, you know, get them, because that's, that's very, I don't know. Mike, did you ever hear any gunshots in South Wilkes-Barre? It's actually all over the city, so we should actually add that on to it, people making noise like that. Because I mean, there's sometimes you could hear actually sometimes semi-automatic rifles.
Bob, could you stick to agenda items, please?
Well, yeah, I am, but I'm just trying to give you some insight what I think you should do too while you're doing a noise ordinance. Because these shootings too, they do create a lot of noise. So if you could, and I know you just won't, you just never listen to me, and you wouldn't listen to me if you just got a million dollars every time I came here. But I know it's a waste of time coming here, but I respect what you're trying to do with this fireworks ordinance, but it's basically impossible to stop. And that's one thing people do is to have fun is that. And I think these people who allowed this to even pass in Harrisburg, you know, they're the ones who created this trouble. So I guess that's all I got to say for right now, but I'm warming up for the second half of the show.
Thank you. Sam?
Sam Troy. Again, I want to reiterate my, it seems like a broken record, I know, but my opposition to the suspension of the alcohol ordinance for the rain. I mean, I don't, I'm not being discriminatory, it doesn't matter, you know, I've opposed this for the the River Fest, the show, live bands by the county puts on and the arts, the Fine Arts Fiesta, the Uster High Library. The suspension of the alcohol ordinance, to me, again, I am against that and I would hope somebody on council agrees with that. I don't see the sense of having a ordinance if it's suspended every time some organization wants it to be suspended. What's the sense of having it? And along those lines, I don't think the police are, I'm getting off the course here, but and I assume here again that there's going to be some restrictions in terms, there is going to be carding of people and I don't know if it's, it doesn't say here, it's supposed to be just like a wine tasting thing like the Fine Arts Fiesta, is that what it is? We should spell it out, it doesn't. Just says consumption of alcoholic beverages, that's a generality, so it should be more specific. So it's just going to be wine tasting then. All right. But again, I'm opposed to that because I think that this area does have a problem and this sort of thing tends to aggravate the problem. We don't know what this, what the effects of this suspension are going to be in terms of the people who partake of the alcohol. Anyway, the next two items, more important, I do agree, I'm glad to see that there is some some attention being paid to the improvements to Kirby Park, I guess it is, the riverfront vitalization program. But on the same, by the same token, a $250,000 grant there, I think to a certain extent might be wasted because the that particular park, Nesbit Park, well, it says Kirby Park upland area, I don't know if this this involves the Kirby, the Nesbit Park or not, but if it does, again, I think that access road is open all night. So whatever improvements you're going to make, it might be counterproductive in terms of making these improvements if people. I see a lot of desecration down there of the natural area, you know, besides litter and people changing their oil and and other means of exploiting the area there, you know, I think it should be restricted to bicycles and pedestrians, but of course, nobody hears me out on that. So I think any improvements might be outweighed by the continued, continued exploitation of that area. Now, along the lines of these two healthcare proposals, first of all, Mayor, you're a little bit vague on the explanation you just gave. Why is this necessary, this vehicle? As far as I know, the, what is actually going to be tested here? Used to purchase the vehicle, okay, so the purchasing is paid for, it's still tax money, I mean, still should be some justification for it, for the, for the common taxpayer. I assume this is going to be for, it's going to be a mobile clinic. What are they going to test for? Is this for vaccinations or what? What is the purpose of this? I think it should be explained to the public, maybe it was explained in the work session the other day, but not all of us can make that work session. And as far as the software agreement goes, was that put out in an RFP even though it's and what is the source of that $650,000, Mayor? The public has a right to know. Is that coming from the general fund? Is that ARP money? And why is that necessary? It seems to me like the whole health department is an enclave for political hierarchies. I'm not saying it's useless, it's a useless department, but I would like to see some justification for some of the things that, some of the people that work there. Like for instance, these, these public information officers, Mr. Yonkai in particular. I, I know their salary's being paid by the state, that's still taxpayer money. The city's paying the benefits of these people, and I'd like to know what this, what the people in general are getting back from that. Besides maybe, I mean, are they getting vaccinations? I remember calling during the COVID, there was no, no one there to help me, I'm not, I wasn't talking about myself, but in particular for COVID vaccinations, they weren't available for that. And a small tale I want to tell, I called somebody from the health department, usually they help me out, there's a certain double block in my area where people are pretty ignorant of the trash they throw in the street and the condition of the home. So the person came up and looked at it, which was nice, but instead of citing that particular double block, he turned around and cited what he thought was my property for having trash on it. Turned out it wasn't my property, so the thing was resolved. But I thought that was a, was a hell of an ironic twist there. And I called somebody to pay attention to a home that really needed it, a double block that needed it, and it turned out that I was the object of a citation, which as I said, was resolved because it wasn't my property and the person did clear it up. But thank you for any attention you can give me on these questions. I guess there will be none.
Anyone else on pending legislation? Okay, Kath.
Okay, so I'll take a vote on the consent agenda resolutions, which includes one, two, three, four, five resolutions and minutes. Need a motion and a second?
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Marconi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Brooks?
All right.
Mr. Marconi?
Just, just real quick before I, I put my vote in, I just want to let people know that I had some questions on the 45-foot mobile clinic and also the $650,000 software. I did speak with Charlie before, and the mayor also had just said that it is 100% financed. Some people were asking me about that, I did say that it is, it is, you know, it is 100% funded from a grant. And I just wanted to put that on the record. With that being said, my vote is yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
The next item is the resolution temporarily suspending the open consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Rock in the River on July 14th, 21st, and 28th. Need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Brooks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marconi. Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
I'm staying.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
And the final item would be the ordinance filed council number three of 2023, which is the consumer fireworks ordinance.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Belishko.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McBride.
You can have it.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
And Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of all the business.
Council pre-tenetations, Councilman Brooks?
Nothing since Tuesday, thank you.
Councilman Marconi?
Nothing since Tuesday.
Councilwoman McBride?
The only outstanding-
I talk every day to them. Sam?
The only outstanding issue since Tuesday is, and I'm, I have a feeling the administration is already on it, is the old Stan Lane's building, it's just, there's a lot of just debris around the building, there's graffiti on the building. Like I said, I'm sure that it's been reported to you already, but if I could just get a status update on that when you have a chance.
We'll get to the, to the building and make sure it has been done.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Councilman Barrett, please.
Now, just one thing I feel to mention on Tuesday, and we're talking about grass and weeds and everything. And I just wanted to thank the administration for again taking care of the residents in Pine Ridge. We had to step up and pretty much take care of ourselves again. But I appreciate that, the residents appreciate, they just wanted to pass along their thanks. And again, as a result of the efforts, there's a new home, another home being constructed there right now. Foundation is going up right now, today, they've been working on it. So it just goes to show if you invest in these properties that they, there are returns for doing it. It's just unfortunate sometimes we have to push a little bit to get the right person to do it. But thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I have my latest report from the sanitary authority. These are catch basins that were cleaned, catch basins that were replaced. And they only did one street sweeping so far this year, but they're, they're out there now. So I'll have that list in a month or so. Okay, thank you.
Public discussion. Greg Ropp?
My name is Greg Ropp, I was at the last council meeting and I spoke about the fire hydrants. I would just like to ask for a little bit more accountability. Is there any way, well, just like Mr. Belishko mentioned there, you got some letters back from the sewer authority about what was done. I'd like to see if there's a possibility to get an Excel sheet set up with, I know there's 590 fire hydrants, which would be a very long list, but I'm sure they don't check them every day, well, they're supposed to check them once a year. So is there a way to put a count, a column for the date they were checked and the date they're supposed to be checked again? So we know, like I could go on the website, anybody could go on the website and make sure that theirs is on the list and the date is being checked. I'm not going to stand out there and make sure it's checked, I would like to, but I have to go to work. But also at $140,000 a year that we're paying, is it possible also to ask them? Now, you can't put a label on because somebody's going to walk by, pull the label off and throw it off. But is there any way to put a sticker? Even if you were to hide it, I mean, you could put it up underneath somewhere where, that if people knew it was there, I'm not saying everybody, but somebody that's involved, we could go and we could look at whatever date it was. But I want accountability. I mean, that was, it was on my street and I still drive by that building every day. And without having two fire hydrants not working was a major catastrophe. We're lucky somebody didn't die or something. But if there's anything you could do to open something to the public that we could see when the fire hydrants have been checked and when they will be checked again, I would appreciate it. Because I mean, there's a group of my neighbors, I mean, we're willing to check it in our neighborhood. I'm not going out to South Wilkes-Barre or anything. I mean, I wish everybody would get involved, but that's all I wanted to say.
I agree with you, 100%, 100%. But the sanitary authority, that's not in their-
Oh, no, no, I mentioned you as a sanitary authority because you got paperwork back from the sanitary authority and you were able to read what, what catch basins were done and all of this. I'd like to see that kind of information come back on the phone.
Right, sort of, I agree with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Harmon Lane residents?
Good evening. We're here because we have a very bad problem with noise up in our area. We have a neighbor that, every weekend, we can definitely count on it, once the weather gets good, to have loud music and a lot of hollering and screaming because the music is so loud, they can't hear one another without screaming louder than the music or attempt to. And this goes on from maybe 11 o'clock in the morning and it'll still continue until midnight. We cannot use our front porches, we cannot have any friends in our backyards. It's just one thing after another. And I actually, a year ago, walked up and tried to talk to them about it and that did not work. We have ordinances against this. I've got copies of them in my hand, as you can see, I've highlighted, highlighted the things. We've had the police up this past weekend. Police were called by several neighbors. They were up late, like around 11 o'clock or 10:30 or something. And I guess the music did stop at that point, or at least lowered. And then at 5:00 AM, they started again. And two of the neighbors again called the police. But this is going on every weekend. We can't sit on our front porches. And I had one police officer come up one day and tell me, well, they have till 11 o'clock. No, they don't. Not under this ordinance, they don't.
You're right, you're right.
I'm supposed to be able to use my property. I'm supposed to be able to sit down with, with friends and have a conversation on my front porch if I'd like to do that. I can't do that now. So we need to get somebody up there to do something. I don't know if you can just send them a, send them a letter and tell them that they're in violation of these, there's a noise one, there, there is a nuisance one. And that they can be fined, maybe that would do something or else actually fine them, not just tell them, close it down. Because that doesn't work. So we really need your help. What do you, what do you mean?
You can also hear the noise in your house, like you don't have to be on the porch to hear it, like in your house, watching TV, you can hear the thumping. And that's with windows and doors closed. And this is like she said, all day, every single weekend.
I sympathize with you, and I'm sure everybody here is as well as I do.
Yes.
Have at least one or two of those in their districts throughout the city. I agree with you. Charlie, could we like ask the chief to try to look?
I think we need to start fining them.
Yeah. Yeah. I agree.
That might get their attention.
Yep. We hear it all the time, aren't we?
Yeah, I mean, at some point, like I understand you want to, you know, you don't want to be too hard on people and you want to give people a chance, but at the same time, it's like, some people don't learn that way. You have to slap them with a fine and then that's it, so.
This has been going on a year.
Right.
This is the second year now.
Yeah, so clearly the warnings aren't working.
And nothing, we just got a new neighbor, he just bought the property two doors away from me. He's only in the, in the house maybe a month at the most. And last weekend, he had family come from Ohio and they listened to that for the whole weekend, for three days.
It's always the same house?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's the only house.
Mayor?
Go visit that. I won't mention your name, ma'am, because I don't want to make it public, but if you want to send me the address, I have a meeting scheduled with Chief of Police tomorrow, 11 o'clock. And I'll make sure that I pass this information on to him, okay? And explain to him what you are going through, the situation the four of you and other neighbors are going through. So please pass that on to me, you have my contact information.
Yes.
Without going, like I said, making your name public, I don't want to do that for you. So just send me that information, I promise you, they'll be part of my 11 o'clock meeting tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Sure.
We listened to it all last summer and had to deal with it. They started at Easter. I had family over, we listened to it Easter. What happens is they're good luck through Friday, but then they have family come in from out of town.
Yep.
And that's when it starts. So we listened to it Friday, Saturday.
Or Sunday.
And Sunday at 5:00 AM. And we just can't deal with it.
Hopefully, hopefully, the mayor can take care of it with the police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Kalabowski?
So, so, officer? Bob Kalabowski. I wanted to touch base with you. Wanted to touch base with council. As you know, Councilman Barrett, the senior member of council, yeah, he told me to put that open records request in, and I did about the, what it's cost the taxpayers for council people being able to count the part-time service towards the full-time pension. And I was wondering, did, I gave his ample time, I've been a little busy and I gave his ample time. Has each council person reviewed how much these part-time people that went on to be mayor and went on to be city controller, how much does this cost the taxpayers? I think Mayor Namie, I think his fam, well, his wife's still getting $26,000 a year. And I think if you add it all up, I think it's like three quarters of a million dollars, but working eight years full-time and then collecting all those years, I think it's almost three quarters of a million. But I think my figures may be pretty close to $2.5 million for all the people that were able to do that, including the Penguin, Tom McGorty. Yeah, he's collecting, I think. The sad thing is, is some of these people get more than people that worked here for 35 years. And Bill, you are the one who said that you would look into it, I have you on video. And I think as the senior member, you should do something about this. You have extra time more than some of the other council people. And I think you should actually try to do something about this. Because I keep bringing it up and, and I don't get nowhere. And truthfully, this is a waste of time, you know what I mean? It's a, it's a complete waste of time because you just aren't going to do nothing. And, you know, I did exactly what you told me. You said, go put an open records request in and, you know, I guess you just won't answer anyway. You know, if who's taking time to add it all up, what it's cost us. And it's outrageous. And I mean, you can make an ordinance now for fireworks, why can't we make an ordinance to stop this? And when I looked at these papers, according to the way the payroll is, you start getting, it says you're working 40 hours a week. There's not one of you's worked 40 hours a week as a council person. So I know you just aren't going to do nothing about it and it's basically, I'd be better off to jump out the window and hope I land in a convertible or something. Because it's just, it's a waste of time. And also, I'm checking on something, and I don't know if Attorney Henry, if you could answer this, I don't know if you will, but if a person is on pension for Wilkes-Barre City who worked here for 30 years, if they run for an elected office and they get it, they can't be stripped of their pension. Because what I understand, there was a person who wanted to run for council against Mr. Belishko, and they were told if they ran that he would lose his pension. And I, this was just brought to my attention, so I'm going to check on it further because I mean, you know, he, I don't see how you could take somebody's pension off them because they want to run against a council person. I think that's false information. There has to be false information. But if it was said to this guy and he didn't run, that's a real, a real shame. And the other thing I want to bring up about is this workers' compensation stuff. And like Mr. Marconi, his poor wife was injured, hurt her ankle and came back, the poor thing fell out of a chair, I guess it was a faulty chair. Was on workers' comp for what, three years, collecting? And then I guess, I don't know if she's back to working or not, but she fell out of the chair and I guess she's back on workers' comp. But I don't know if there's anything the administration could do. I understand there's some people that have been on workers' compensation for over 15 years. And we have to do something to stop this. Because it's outrageous for somebody who does get hurt, they should be able to go on workers' comp. But there's definitely something wrong. It's absolutely wrong that somebody could be on workers' compensation for that amount of time. And it's not a little bit of money, I understand it's a lot of money, maybe 70, 80,000 dollars a year they're collecting. And I don't see how this could continue to go on and on and on. Just like I'm bringing up about the former council people, it's, it's actually sickening. And another thing is too, the way that people are able to pad their pensions by working all the overtime. And we had some people just retired, and they're friends of mine, going out with $120,000 a year or over $100,000 a year. Some might even be higher. It's just, it's outrageous and we cannot afford to keep going. And don't forget, I've been warned by people that we're going to be in big trouble in another few years, because we did get some federal money. Though Charlie told me our debt's going down, we got to get this city out of debt. And I think you should really look into this stuff that I'm bringing up, even though you- And I think you should really look into the stuff that I'm bringing up, even though you won't. You won't, because I will come back down next, next council meeting, and I want everybody to have the figures, how much Tom Layton, Magrory, Kathy Kane, the Penguin, Magrory, Bernie Mangrenhausen, Layton, how they're, how much money they've collected. So, and I guess I'm out of time, I don't want to get maced, and I don't want to get assaulted, and I don't want to get drug out of here. So I was wondering, is anybody going to answer any of my questions? And I don't expect you to.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, citizens, here you go. Nobody will answer me. This is what, motion to adjourn, hurry up. We don't want to answer Bob, we don't want to face the taxpayers. See how they answer? They don't answer. This is why I call this a crime syndicate. It's a syndicate where they all pad each other's pockets, they keep going on and on and on, and I'm sick of saying all this stuff, but the sad thing about it is--